Okay.
Okay, we believe we are good.
Now, Ron's still trying to connect the audio here.
Good. Okay, I got connection to the cloud now, so.
You got the record button, Chris?
Yep, it's recording on the hard drive and to the cloud, Mr. Mayor.
Just checking, Chris, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you Cindy, but I can't see you.
Oh, what do I do to see me?
Uh, you gotta turn on your camera.
Well, I thought that was on earlier.
Now, I can't hear you, Mr. Orsinius. Julie needs to press the unmute button or have Chris do it.
I did, I've already done that, so it's on Ron's side.
We go here, Ron. Unmute.
Oh, then you might be there.
No. Unmute. Mute.
Hey, I believe everybody's unmuted now except for Kim and Rich, but I think that's their choices. Ron? Hey, Ron, I can't hear you.
Ron, we can't hear you.
I know, it's on my side, it says it's on. I think he has to turn it up. Turn up his microphone volume. I see you, Kim.
Ron, you might just have to nod your head a lot.
Oh, boy. I don't know why, but.
The chat is always a recorded thing that comes in a recording as well, so if maybe you can just chat in the typing section.
Yeah, it shows that Ron's microphone is on, on my end.
I can't see them. No.
All right, just had to play with us, Ron, we're gonna get going here, so maybe it'll start working. All right, are we all ready?
Not everybody.
So, first couple of questions, I guess, has Melissa and Gerald been sworn in? All that good stuff?
No.
Do we need to accomplish that first? Chairman, Ainstock?
We can do that.
So.
Does the meeting even call the order?
I will here just shortly, but it's not on the agenda. So I have to get a motion to amend the agenda right away. Is that all right to do, Bob?
Yes, I, that'd be fine.
Yeah, they're gonna be in here to make voting decisions, they better be able to be sworn in to do so. All righty, so call order and roll call, please.
Edwards?
Here.
Elwick?
Here.
Orsinius? I think he's here. Hessen?
Here.
Har is absent, Stark.
Unmute your microphone, Tammy.
Here.
Perfect.
Then do you want roll call for the electric utility?
I think that would be appropriate.
Baron?
Here.
Ainstock?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have two new ones, Forrest?
Here.
And Mosher?
Here.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda with the addition that 2.8 will be swearing in of the two new candidates.
Motion?
Two new members, I mean.
Motion?
Second.
By Stark, second by, I think, Andrew. All those in favor?
I.
Nathan's got a question.
Nathan?
I was just curious, is this a, this is a meeting run by the mayor and city council? So, or VMU?
Right now, I'm running it.
Okay.
So. Are they ready to swear in the two new members, Cindy, or?
I'm sorry, I did not bring the oath of office with me.
Can we get it? Be hard for them to vote here, we don't.
Did we swear you in, Rich?
She asked you if you got sworn in, Rich.
I don't recall swearing in trustees in the past, is my problem.
That's correct, it's never been done.
All right, and we're gonna continue on like they're members then, till somebody tells me different, so. All right, so now I'm going down to item three is the mayoral civil emergency declaration. So, before I read that, Chris, you wanna give the Cliff Nelson version of what we're doing this?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, the reason for this is, um, is in response to what you asked for in the last council meeting, as far as being able to look at some way to deal, or actually not deal, but to assist the residents of the citizens, resident citizens of the city of Benton with utilities and utility, potential utility shut offs and waiving of late fees, but in order to do that, first and foremost, there just needs to be an emergency proclamation done by the mayor, and that's what's before you. So, in order to do that, in order to even have the waiving of, potential waiving of fees, both the utility board and the city council would need to approve that, but beforehand, you need to do this proclamation, that's reason number one. The second and final reason is, if there's any federal or state grants that may come down the road for FEMA or from Homeland Security, they like to have a proclamation in place already for that kind of assistance.
Any questions on that? Oh, no, I'll go ahead and read it then, so. The city of Benton Iowa Emergency Proclamation, whereas COVID-19 poses a serious threat to the public health and safety of the city of Benton, Iowa, as outlined by the Center for Disease Control and the CDC, and whereas the Iowa Department of Public Health, the IDPH, has now determined that community spread of COVID-19 has occurred in the state of Iowa, and whereas the CDC has recommended that persons do not congregate in gatherings over 10 persons to attempt to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in the general public, and whereas the Honorable Governor Kim Reynolds has recommended that all school districts within the state of Iowa close until April 30th, 2020, to help to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 within the state, and whereas the superintendent of the Benton Community School District has therefore closed the Benton Community School District for an indefinite period, expected to be at the very least April 30th, 2020, and whereas Section 372.41, Parent 2 of the Code of Iowa, 2019, grants the mayor powers to declare an emergency and govern through proclamation to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Benton. Now, therefore, my Bud Mayor, the newly elected mayor of the city of Benton, do hereby proclaim the following. One, that a state of emergency or public danger exists within the city of Benton because of threat of the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Two, that based upon the advice of the CDC and other public health agencies, I hereby declare that the Benton Public Library will be closed public beginning upon execution of this proclamation, but staff shall report as normal. Three, that pursuant to CDC recommendations, gatherings of 10 more people are strongly disurged until further notice. And number four, that this proclamation of emergency may be modified and/or superseded by future proclamation of the office of the mayor of Benton as future events warrant. Five, that any violation of any proclamation of the office of the mayor of the city of Benton, Iowa shall be enforceable by the Benton Police Department, and any violation of same shall be a violation of Title 1, Section 3 of the Benton Code of Ordinance and punishable as a simple misdemeanor, dated this 7th day of April, 2020. So, that proclamation being done, we're going to move on to item four. So, this will be a joint discussion between VMU and us is the need a motion to approve allowing contractors to continue installing critical infrastructure.
Motion?
Second.
Was my start segmented by Nate? So, VMU guys, it's, the construction people have been kind of given a free card, basically in the state of Iowa, to go ahead and continue doing business as usual. Before, I would like you guys to agree or disagree, I'd like to bring up a couple things. I tested you guys this weekend about the holes out in the streets. I'm glad you guys paid attention to them. When I drove into town last night, I noticed some very serious OSHA violations taking place by the contractors in town. And the last thing I want to see happen is have somebody get hurt on this project because we're not watching it. Specifically, what I saw last night was a guy hanging off the side of a tractor driving through downtown while they're carrying a hand hole around. Tonight, I saw a sidewalk being dug out in the alley over by the police station, the rock piled up on the sidewalk, no sidewalk close signs, and then it looked like that guy was under any protection whatsoever, somebody could have turned into the alley because he was bent down there and could have been ran over. And when I was coming down Sea Avenue toward the high school, they had one sign that was laying on the ground, not up, and the drill was halfway in, out into Sea Avenue, and they were drilling the surface. So, before I allow them to continue on this emergency thing, I want to know if these things are gonna be addressed, because the last thing I want to do is have this whole fiber optic thing tainted because somebody got hurt in the process.
How about for the guy?
Here.
So, I'm gonna want to have a list of all these so I can take them to the guys that are supervising this thing and find out what's going on with them.
Well, I shouldn't have to give you a list, Tom, it should be just something they should know what they're doing.
Are we sure that it's the central cable people, or is it the other group that's in town? I mean, that would be, they're all red trucks, so it might be something to check into as well.
Yeah, there's a central cable truck parked right next to the one. They're all downtown, they weren't on the other end of it, so. But I just gotta make sure they're being safe. I, OSHA's crawling all over eastern Iowa right now, so Benton's just gonna be one of the next stops, so.
I'll have a discussion with them to make sure they're following the right rules they need to rule, follow, tell them that some people are concerned that they're not following them, and we've got FAR Technology doing the supervision of the contractor work, but the contractor's still responsible.
Exactly.
To make sure all his people are safe, that's up to him. I can't tell him how to do his job, other than he needs to be doing it safely.
Well, the problem is, we can shut them down. If we feel that they're acting in an unsafe manner in the city of Benton, they gotta make sure they're doing it. I do not want somebody to get hurt on this, so.
Yeah, just remind them and make sure they police it better.
I appreciate that, so. I think it's important that we keep getting this thing done, so. I don't have an issue allowing them to continue, and we can't really stop them because the governor hasn't done anything to stop them. So, anybody else want to weigh in on that at all, or? Because once the council approves this, I think you guys have to approve it too, as the VMU board to allow them to continue to do that. It has to be a joint approval by all of us, or a group roll call, or whatever you want to say, so. Any comments, or?
So, there is one thing that you may not be aware of, you know, central cables doing the outside work. Patriot Communication is gonna be doing the inside work eventually, and they're trying to put together their own procedures and policy, because how they have to spend a week calling people up saying, do you want to allow somebody into their house? If they don't want anybody in their house, it won't happen. If they do, these guys are gonna be wearing suits, masks, gloves, and be working with the homeowner or business owner saying, you gotta stay so far away from me while they're doing this. If the, if nobody wants them in, they won't go in. If they go into a place and somebody's coughing really bad, the contractor wants the right to be able to say, I'm not going into this house then, to keep his own employees safe, so it's a two-way safety thing going on, and that's what we're planning to do. We're not gonna force anybody to take a conversion inside your house, but if they want to have it to get internet going or whatever, that's what we're trying to shoot for.
No, I think that's a great idea. We don't want anybody to be put at risk for this, so. That has to be a group effort, like you said, between the contractor and the homeowner. That's a great idea, so are they gonna have that out? You said, are they gonna give a policy to you, or?
Yeah, they're working on something right now. They'll have it done by our next board meeting on Tuesday, but it's gonna take them a week to schedule the stuff, because they gotta call homeowners and schedule the time when they can get into their home.
Right.
And that's when they'll find out, are you gonna allow me in? And so that's gonna take some time, but I guess I wanted to get this on the agenda so that we didn't have this delay stopping them from, I don't think they'll probably be ready until the last week of April, anyway.
Okay. No, that's good, so. Is there any other comments or questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, bud, excuse me, back to your procedural question about voting on this. I'd like to hear an answer from Cindy, or Bob, and whoever, or Chris. Are we all working all together, or are we doing a separate vote for VMU after the council?
Um, just trying to answer a question typing here. Also, let me get back to the page. The question was again, Rich, I'm sorry, I was trying to answer some questions here.
Bud was asking whether or not we'd have a separate vote, or we'd all vote together, basically.
You can, for this one, I believe it'll be all together for this one. Would that be acceptable, Bob? Bob?
Bob is froze up.
Oh, Bob's froze up. Yeah, because this is not a roll call vote for this. It's the handling of money, it's just installing critical infrastructure. I think just a general voice vote would be acceptable from both groups tonight.
Okay, well, that's the way we'll go with it then, that we'll all just vote together, I'll just ask for a simple, all those in favor and all those opposed, so. All those in favor to allow the contractor to continue installing the infrastructure?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Sounds like it's unanimous, so, Bob, you're back. We just did a general, all the way across vote, is that all right?
Yeah, I just can't hear anything that anybody's saying, so. The video really cut out on me here in the last couple minutes.
So, we just, everybody moved to allow the people to continue working, so. So now, comes the next item on the agenda, the discussion of the late fees and the utility accounts. So, I asked Chris a couple weeks ago, or last week, to see what we can do to help people through this situation so they're not having to worry about doing late fees or getting disconnected. We kind of tossed around the idea of doing a little micro loan to people, but Chris didn't think we should probably approach that right now with all the extra things being put out by the federal government and the state in regards that we didn't want to jeopardize anybody's opportunity, but I would like to have some discussion on if the VMU board and the council would be interested in just not charging any late fees for probably the next couple months until people kind of regain their footing, and that we have no disconnects as well. I don't want to add any more burden onto the people here than we have to, so, that's my thought.
I'm not sure if this is the right format, if we're in that portion, but I would make a motion to waive the Benton consumer fees, late fees only, through the end of May. Waive them, and then, and then we can talk about deferring late fees in June through August.
Right now, it's just a discussion, Tammy, I think council Thursday night, you can
Okay.
officially waive, and then the trustees could do the same on next Tuesday's meeting.
Okay.
So, what do you all trustees think about that?
I don't have any problem with them waiving the fees.
How about disconnects?
I don't have any problem disconnects either.
The Iowa Utility Board is not recommending any disconnects at this point.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would agree, I think that makes sense, waive the disconnects.
I agree.
And just waiving the fees and tag fees or whatever, right now, the utilities, the customer's still gonna owe the bills, it's, they just don't have to pay a late fee.
Right.
Right.
That's exactly right, so. So, if they can't have the wherewithal to pay it for the next couple months, we'll allow them to get that spread out over time, you know, for the remainder.
Yeah, down the road, we have the option, we can do like a contract with the customer, they can just agree to pay, you know, a fifth of it this month, and a fifth next month, or, you know, half and half, and a third, you know, we will work with them at city hall. They just need to call and tell us what they can do, and we'll try to do it, and they'll put a contract with, on their utility account.
You want to give consideration to Tammy's thought here about just doing it through, through May, waiving late fees, pending any more updates from the federal government, and I guess the governor?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
There, during this whole thing with the stimulus, I know there's a program out there for, for small businesses that have just rolled out, the pay, what's it called, the Paycheck Protection Plan, and that goes on from February 15th through June 30th, so. So, I would recommend it maybe coincide with that, but I know it would be bumping up to the end of the fiscal year, but that's, that's kind of going lockstep with what the federal government's offering, just as an option to consider.
What, what were the dates on that plan?
It ends on June 30th.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that part, okay.
If, if you want my advice, just going from the business aspect, like what Cindy said, where you said just, we'll work with them, I don't think that's appropriate. We need to have a guideline that says, after this is all said and done, whenever that date is, that we come up with an actual payment back program, instead of just saying, hey, yeah, we'll work with you. I don't think that will work. I think we should actually come up with a deadline, like, yeah, you're gonna pay your normal fee plus minimum 10% of what you owe, or something like that, where we actually have a deadline when this is all said and done, and just instead of trying to work with each individual customer or homeowner. That's gonna get really complicated in the city hall. If we work with each individual homeowner, then we, if we were to set up something when this is all said and done.
Nathan, what we do typically, like, well, in winter moratorium times, when certain customers are not keeping up with their bill, we do a variety of contracts, some of them will agree to do it over six months, or some of them will do a 12-month contract, so we have done a variety of contracts, I'll say, with, with customers.
So, do you want to do that with 200 customers, 200 different?
It's, it's part of our job, it is what we have done. And each person's, you know, case is a little, maybe a little bit different, maybe someone was off work for just, you know, a month, and someone else is off work for two months, so it's, it's, they're all.
Throw like a minimum in there, is what I'm saying.
Contract, contracts, typically the longest we would like to do is a 12-month contract.
Okay, as long as, I think we should just put a minimum payment per month, or something, somehow word it, so like, somebody's not playing, well, yeah, I'll give you a dollar extra.
No, oh.
You know what I mean? Like, there's a minimum on it. To pay it back. Anyway, that's just my thought. Right?
Originally, when I was throwing this around with people, I talked to Tammy and Chris and Melissa Swan about it, and I thought that if we waived them until the late fees and whatever, until the end of June, and then we gave them six months to pay everything back till the end of December, that would be able to spread those payments out over six months, which wouldn't be that bad a pill to swallow, I didn't think.
That's, that's giving them a minimum, which is great, perfect.
Yep.
Like, so like, some people, like, let's, I mean, if you do the math real quick and do, let's say your utility bill is a hundred dollars a month, and you don't pay your utility bill for three months, now you owe 300, plus the upcoming month, and so now, some people are gonna want to pay you their a hundred dollar a month, plus an extra five bucks, you know, and so towards, so yeah, putting on like a, you get an, when this is all said and done, you get an extra six months, that's, that would be awesome.
But the problem with that is, you don't, you can't kill their power in the middle of the winter, can you?
Right, right, right.
So, we'd have to come up with a little different scenario there, but I like that idea.
I think we're a bunch of smart people, I'm sure it can get figured out, so.
Yep.
As far as. I'll take a minute here, bud, this is Rich Ainstock. As what the board has been talking about, discussing in our meeting next Tuesday, a couple of the new members may not know about this just yet. There's been public comment about the utility providing some assistance to people. There have been several suggestions made, have made them public there to go to the board and see what they think about it. And this will happen next Tuesday. As far as waiving these fees, that's a start, that's something that can help somebody who is in trouble right now. One of the things I do want to mention to the city council and also anybody else who's listening, listening into this cast, that the VMU is required by law to treat all customers the same. We can't say, tell us 10 people you know that are in trouble and we'll help them out. It doesn't work that way. Part of when you get to be a monopoly, which is what a local utility electric is, is a monopoly, you have rules and regulations you have to follow, and one is that you must treat everybody the same. So, anybody who chooses not to pay their utility bill will have their, their late fee waived. You can't pick and choose on who deserves it and who doesn't, so anybody who does it, I could choose not to pay mine, and it'll be waived for me, whether I can afford to pay it or not, so you understand that's how it works. I think our board, we had a nice meeting tonight before this meeting, and I, I think we're getting a good rapport going. I think we'll be able to put our heads together and have some things to talk about next Tuesday in this area. So, we need a little time to get together and put our heads together, and listen to the constituents who have sent ideas in and vet them and weigh them, and of course, discussions with anybody from the city council is always welcome.
Yeah, I understand, it would have to be across the board that we can't pick and choose. I'm willing to take that risk. I mean, I, for one, if I have the where for all to pay, I'm gonna pay. I'm not gonna take advantage of the situation, so I hope there's other people out there thinking the same way, so... Yeah, I agree. I think we're heading on the right path here. We'll discuss it, we'll have it on our agenda for Thursday night to kind of discuss, and we can send over what our thoughts to you guys, if you can discuss them at your meeting too, and see if the two will meld together. We also welcome any comments from the board and the trustees to help us through that situation as well, so... Does anybody else have any other comments on that? Nada? Well, then, if we're all done with that, I'll take a motion for a German. I don't know who said that.
That sound like Rock!
Mr. Passinos, like, a second?
Sound came up all of a sudden.
Andrew, you got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Welcome, Melissa and Gerald.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.